So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call. We have everyone here except Kevin and Julie, and Jesse is joining us by phone. Item three, adoption of the agenda. Don't believe we have any changes, correct?
No, that's correct.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Presented and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Okay. Opportunity for visitors. You guys are on here just a little bit, so I don't see any others, so we'll go on. Item five, consent agenda. That includes your cash balance report, check registry activities account, minutes of May fifth, minutes of May twentieth, and then it looks like a donation.
Yes. Melissa Hip applied for a Kansas Book Festival grant and was awarded seventeen hundred dollars for Roosevelt Elementary School Library.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Yes.
Passes six zero. Item six, old business, student handbooks.
So you have the modifications to the student handbooks, activities handbooks for both middle school and high school. You know, so those changes. This is just recommendation to make these changes to those handbooks for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Mr. Kraus, I have a couple of questions. One was the middle school and high school, the activities now have different concussion protocols. Should we, like, the middle school has the normal one, high school is now deferring to case. Should we just change the vote?
The one from the middle school is also vacation.
Okay, perfect. It's just spelled out differently. Okay, yeah, cool. I knew that was the old, I saw the language was, that was in the high school one last year, so I didn't know if the language needed to match or if there were any differences between the two.
No, same one from case.
Okay, cool.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The other question I had was that, is it, I saw several of the handbooks had addressed smartwatches specifically. I didn't know if we needed to talk about a district-wide policy on smartwatches to make things simpler. There that the language was pretty much the same that folks had proposed, but I didn't know if that would make it simpler for parents if it was some sort of universal language.
I think that would, I think that would be a good discussion for, as, you know, maybe moving into, not moving into next year, but for next year. And, you know, there are some recommendations from KSDE in terms of, you know, smart devices and smart, smartwatches, and that'll, that continues to be an issue. So, so yeah, absolutely.
Awesome.
You guys maybe make a note to, you know, work on that and make some consistency for next year.
Yeah, I think the policies were pretty much the same. I just didn't know if that would make it simpler for all of our administrators if it was just the same policy all throughout.
I know, elementary they're talking about with the kids don't really, don't really know how to control it and it needs all the time. I know there's been some issues in high school, but I haven't heard a lot of concerns coming from the teachers that smartwatches are a problem in the classroom.
Okay.
Yeah, and ours aren't. I mean, ours are more like, sometimes kids will show up with like, it's like a gaming watch. It's really what it is. I mean, essentially, we ask them to fit in their book bag. It's not, you know, they can put it back on when they leave the building and stuff, but we've had issues with them like going off and things like that, or them wanting to play games on it.
Yeah.
That's why we addressed it.
It's kind of similar to like, you know, cell phones, they can't have it at all. In the elementary, middle school has to keep it a lot, whereas in high school, we allow them to keep it on their person, but, you know, hanging on the wall, so.
Yeah.
This technology also has kind of changed a little bit as they get older because they have a little more responsibility.
Yep, yep, totally understand, totally understand. Like my kids have the Gizmo watches that are like a stepping stone in between having nothing and having a phone, so, yeah.
For us, if a kid runs his cellphone, we just have him, I mean, I believe we have a state data just along from their book bag and has to be shut off because it wasn't easy how many times it would go off during the day, so.
When I know a while back, there was some concern that the new smartwatches could take pictures and like some of that kind of stuff, so. Nothing to hold up the provisions, just maybe something to like consider if we need to do a district-wide policy.
Good suggestion.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
And to approve the student handbook revisions as presented.
I'll second it. Then moved and seconded to approve the student handbook revisions as presented, all in favor?
Yes.
Six zero. Okay, item B, approval of USD four thirty-one school illness control policy.
And this is similar, if not exactly the same, as it's been in the past. It does help clarify some, you know, some of the issues in terms of when students should, should leave, return, and it does have some dates here for some of the screeners, dental screenings, which is kind of a new screener. It also clarifies, you know, some of the birth certificate, things that we get a lot of questions on. So just a recommendation to approve the illness control policy.
And no significant changes in timelines for any of these specific illnesses?
No.
And all in line with that state statute that was, was up top? Perfect.
I move to approve the USD four thirty-one school illness control policy as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six zero. Okay, item C, approval of food service management company.
So I put this under old business, something we've, we've talked about multiple times. The food service management company approval, it's a five-year contract renewable by state statute every single year. So every single year, there's a process to go through it, but every five years, we actually go through the bid process. Jordan and I worked on the RFP to be sent out. KSDE approved the RFP before it was ever sent out. They also had an approved list of companies that we were required to send it to. We require, we sent it to every single one of those companies, primarily electronic form to get it to all of them. We did receive one company, sent us an email saying, thank you, we would like to bid, but we are not prepared to do so. The only bid that we did receive was from OPA. They did, they did, you know, complete the full RFP and sent all of that information back to us. If you want to see the whole thing, feel free, just schedule a time, you can come look through the notebook. I did go ahead and provide to you, whoops, using the wrong mouse, sorry. Did provide to you the one pager that gives an estimate. This is, this is merely an estimate, but it is a comparable estimate to the food service numbers that we have been using. So, so, you know, when it look, when you see in that middle column, number of meals or equivalent, those are approximate estimations of what we have actually been doing this past year in terms of number of meals. There, there is a significant increase in the field fee per meal at the lunch level, the students' lunch level. But I will tell you, when you look at the overall numbers from what we spend on food service in twenty-four, twenty-five, and what their estimated cost is for twenty-five, twenty-six, we're at about a ten percent increase. I mean, you, you all will have a meeting in July and you'll approve fees and lunch prices. My recommendation would be to increase prices by ten cents. That will, that will get it to a point where it's not going to make it an even, it's not going to significantly, it's, it'll significantly cover a portion of that ten percent increase, but we receive enough free and reduced lunch reimbursement that, you know, that's where the majority of our, our money is coming in when it comes to food service. So that dime increase across the board on meals would be a recommendation that would help offset the difference of, of what we see. There's about a ten thousand dollar difference in what we bring in and what they're estimating that we would pay out next year. So that would help offset some of that. We already budget transfers in the food service, so it's not, it, I mean, there's still going to be money budgeted to transfer, just as a, just as an in case type of thing. But overall, for the new contract, we're looking at about a ten percent increase, which across the board, you know, in terms of others in comparison, that's about half of what everybody else is seeing. So, and then administratively, we've talked and we, we know that there are some things we'd like to see improvement on. I'll have discussion with Denise on that the last week of June. So my recommendation is we approve the five-year contract with OPA to the food service management company as presented, very importantly, pending KSDE final approval. Questions?
None. I move to approve the five-year contract with OPA to be the food service management company as presented, pending final KSDE approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six zero. Okay, item seven, new business. A, we have our twenty twenty-four audit report.
So you guys probably have electronic copies or the bound in front of you. We'll first start out with the bond, bound copy. And so if you look at pages one, two, and three, this is our independent auditor's report. This is where your opinion is issued at. As in, the letter is pretty similar to prior year. You won't have any big changes. There was no new standards, so it'll be very similar. In paragraph two, you receive an adverse opinion on US GAAP, and that's because you weigh that each year as you follow K-MAG basis. And then in paragraph three, you'll see you received an unmodified opinion on regulatory basis, which is your K-MAG. This is the cleanest opinion you can receive on an audit. And then the next couple pages of the independent auditor's report, it'll kind of go through. We always like to mention to the board to really review this. It goes through what means to have an audit done on the financials, and then also kind of goes into detail of what's auditor's responsibilities versus management's responsibilities with the audit. Then we'll jump over to page five. Page five is the financial statement that the opinion is actually issued on. The district does pool cash, so it is one full collective statement. And as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the district's ending unencumbered cash was three million seventy-five thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Then we'll jump to page six. And feel free to stop me as I go along with some questions as I'm going through things. Pages six through thirteen, this is our footnotes, and it kind of just goes through accounting policies. I won't go into detail. A lot of them will be the same. If there's any standard changes, those will be implemented throughout. As part of the audit, we also look at statute compliance with Kansas statutes. We did have a couple violations, so I'll have you turn to page ten. On page ten, you'll see, we did have a violation for the bond payment. All three bond payments weren't submitted to the state in the proper twenty days prior to the actual payment due date. We received these dates from the state as a confirmation, and it was fourteen days it was received. And so just making sure you're getting those twenty-day notification put in. And then the other violation is to make sure you're receiving sealed bids for any project or construction or material goods that are over that twenty thousand dollar threshold. It was a purchase of a vehicle. It ended up going over that twenty thousand, so you had to make sure to have those bids out to have, make sure you're looking at all different businesses. So then we'll jump over to page fourteen. Page fourteen will be your long-term debt schedule. At this year, you did have your new turf and track lease. You received the proceeds in this year and made payments on that. And as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, outstanding debt of fourteen million, four hundred and three thousand dollars and seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars with expected payoff year of the twenty, twenty forty, twenty forty-one year. Okay, and then I'm going to jump over to page fifteen. So page fifteen is your budget to actual schedule. We had no budget violations to note this year. And then the next several pages, this will go through each individual fund. So you'll be able to see more in detail with each fund, the breakdown from prior year to current year expenditures and revenues, and then also to budget comparisons. We won't go into detail on those, but if there's any specific fund or questions that you guys have or if they come up later, they can always be forwarded on to us, and we're happy to help answer any questions on any particular fund. I am going to pass this over to Alexis. She does the single audit portion, and so she's going to kind of go over some of our single audit and single audit findings. Okay, so this starts on page forty-two. And the first report that you guys have is the independent auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting. This is where we note any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses that we have over in the financial statements. And we do have three, twenty twenty-four dash oh oh one through oh oh three, and I will touch base on those in just a second. Page forty-four, the second report in this section, independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program. So this is where we touch base on any, again, any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses that we have for the specific major program that we tested for your single audit. Page forty-five notes those two finding numbers. We did have one of each of those, and those are twenty twenty-four dash oh oh four and twenty twenty-four dash oh oh five. Page forty-seven is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So if you're curious what your breakout is between all of your federal programs, this is where you can see that. And the total of all of your federal expenditures for the period was one million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand and four hundred and seven dollars. Change forty-eight is just some required footnotes to go along with that schedule. There's nothing unusual here that we need to point out, so I'm going to jump back one more page to page forty-nine. So this is kind of a summary of the two sections. Under that first header, financial statements, you'll see the unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis that Delaney mentioned earlier. You'll note that we had material weaknesses identified. And then under the federal awards heading, we do have both a material weakness and a significant deficiency. And then you can also see the program that we tested for your major program. One other thing I like to point out, you guys do not qualify as a lower Scotty. That's just because you weigh GAAP basis, so anytime you're not GAAP basis, you automatically are not going to be a lower Scotty. It just means that we have to make sure we test at least forty percent of your federal dollars during that period. Page fifty is where we will get into those financial statement findings. That first one, material weakness, if you've been around for a while, you've probably seen this one. It is segregation of duties, and that is simply because you guys are not big enough to have a kind of segregation in your accounting processes that we are required for auditing standards. That second one, twenty twenty-four dash oh oh two, this is over bank reconciliations, and we just want to make sure that bank recs are being completed timely and make sure they're accurate, and having someone who's not the preparer reviewing that after the fact and making sure that they are getting done in a timely fashion. Page fifty-one has that third material weakness, and this is just that we want to make sure all transactions are being posted correctly, that transfers and drawdowns are completed based upon complete and reconciled reports, and that unencumbered cash balances are correct. We did have to make some material journal entries to the original trial balance that we received to make sure that everything was looking correct and accurate. So then bottom of that same page, we get into the federal award findings. So this is the first finding, the material weakness that I had noted over the major programs. So this is over reporting. With the education stabilization fund program, which is what we tested, there was some required reporting to be submitted to KDHE, and because of some issues with the way things were, like the timing of how they were drawn down, we just couldn't get those reports to quite match what they were looking for. So we just want to make sure that reports are getting submitted on the basis that they're asking for and that things are accurate, and if we can, having someone, again, who isn't the preparer, review it before it gets submitted. The last one that I'll note on that page, that's a significant deficiency. This is over activities allowed or unallowed and allowable costs and cost principles. So with that education stabilization fund of the fifty-one transactions that we tested, nine were found to not meet elements of allowability. So these were things like with payroll, we want to make sure that our time records are matching what's actually paid out and that we do have some kind of a personnel activity report for all employees who are getting paid with federal funds. So if it's a salaried employee, we have to have either a timesheet or have them signing something if they work a hundred percent of their time on that federal program towards allowable activities, having them sign something stating, yes, I'm aware that I'm working a hundred percent of my time on this, and that is true and accurate for the period of time. There were also a couple of transactions that, essentially, there was one big purchase that was charged to the program. It was, I think, Amazon, and most of it was fine. There was just a couple of little things in there that didn't quite meet program allowability standards. So, any questions on any of those findings?
I have a question, just, could you tell me the, like, so based on the, the single audit findings, would it be your recommendation that we pursue some further investigation into other federal award programs and that to see if similar significant deficiencies and material weaknesses exist in those as well? Or do you feel like these were things that should be cleaned up over time?
Education stabilization fund was a.
Yeah.
Unusual.
This is, this is all SRA funds. SRA funds are, are, go away.
Yes.
They're, they're gone.
Yeah.
The, the other piece of, of the SRA funds is the, the way the auditors and, and the way that they're asking us to do it is correct, the way sometimes KSDE in their mind was correct in the way that we were supposed to, that they wanted us to do reporting. Those are two, those two things don't necessarily mesh with one another because they're, KSDE is asking me to submit a report that I've spent all of the money, or I haven't spent all the money, but I have to draw all down, draw down all of the money by September thirtieth of twenty-four. And so those two things did not mesh very well this year. So that was one of the findings, and then, then, you know, we, we were, we were pretty liberal in terms of what some of this was spent on in terms of classroom materials, and so that, that was two of the findings.
So are you seeing similar audit findings for other schools under this particular fund, other, other single audits?
Reporting? It kind of depends. I've had, I definitely have had some school districts that struggled with the way that, because the way they wanted it reported changed from the start of the program to the end. So initially, you were reporting based off of what you had actually spent, and then they changed it to be, they wanted it to match what you had drawn down and spent by the end of it. So there was some struggles there. As far as allowability, it kind of just depended on the district and what they were using it for because everybody had different ways they were spending it. A lot of them just did payroll and tried to make it as easy as possible because they have really big, like, summer school and after-school programs, whereas you guys maybe don't have that possibility because you don't have the big payroll expenses that can be charged to it to use up all that funding. So it, it really just depended on the district.
Okay. And then as far as the, the other two material weaknesses, all not the segregation of duties ones since that's pretty common, one for the size of a district, the other two. I noticed in your, your letter as well that there was a note in here that there were, were delays and difficulties in, in getting records.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll get that. Sorry, no problem.
So I wondered if that's where the correlation was in some of those materials, and if you had any further additional comments?
If you, if you guys don't have any other questions on the finding part, I'll jump to the letter. Okay, that way we can address all. Okay, so yeah, the governance letter is a communication to you as a board, just as internal control findings, any recommendations that we have for the district, including the findings that we had in the single audit. We did note this year, at the very bottom, that's where we note difficulties encountered with management. And we just wanted to note, it was mainly with timing of things not being completed timely and then not timely communication back on, like, corrections. And so we didn't have any disagreements with management, though. We just had, we wanted to make sure that you were aware, and that's why the delay in the audit as well, with it being delivered in June of the following year. So we did want to note that and just make you as a board aware. And then we did have a couple of recommendations that did not get significant in nature, but we wanted to make you aware. Couple of, one of them is one that's kind of been on repeat for a couple of years, and that is to have a district consider creating written procedures and instructions for key positions. That way, when you are having turnover, there's some kind of guidance for the new ones coming in of what procedures this position was doing. And also, it's easier to tell, okay, this is what, when you're advertising that position, this is what they took on, this is what they did. So having that instruction, it makes it easy to be able to identify this is what that position will do. And then also, in the training process, if you don't have the cross-training time, it gives a guidance to the new employees coming in. And then we also had for all receipts to be posted to revenue accounts, and then any expenditures be posted to expenditure accounts. Like Alexis mentioned, we did have some material journal entries that we had to make for things canceling each other out. So it was expenditures getting posted to revenue accounts. Some transfers of funds were not being recorded in the correct expense count. So we just mentioned just to be watching those, and that additional review will help catch some of those, paying attention to those transactions coming through. And then we had for federal programs that run on a reimbursement basis, they should not have a positive cash balance. This is fund should only be drawn down for the expenses that have been incurred or recorded. We had a couple that we had to make material journal entries to move, to make sure that, or to move so the fund was correctly recorded. And then we also had a couple with the title one, means it ran into a positive with the fund, and that was with a grant within the title fund. And then we also had two more. We had change orders in addition. So with your turf and track, track project, it did have an increase in expenditures, and it was brought to the board. There was just no formal approval. And so any major change orders to big projects like that, you just have to have that motion of that approval of that change order. That way, we know the board approves of that extra expense coming on to the district. And then we also had accounts payable at year end that didn't get recorded into the proper year. And this has to do with utilities, timing of some service items. So it's just reviewing those invoices and making sure if they're invoiced prior to year end, they're getting recorded in that proper period, and then if their service is provided in that fiscal year, they have to be recorded as a liability as at that year end. So we just wanted to make you aware of some of those recommendations. They didn't come up in large in nature, but we just wanted to bring it up so that you're aware of some of the internal control recommendations we have as well.
So on that last one, I mean, just. So on that last one, I mean, just just for clarification, I mean, if we received the gas bill for the month of June, should we try to encumber that?
Um so usually they come in the month after and if you see the services, if it comes in June, um it'll come in as accounts payable. So you'll go ahead and record it into that fiscal year as an expenditure and then it'll just hit your accounts payable. Um and that's, a lot of it was like the food services, the two months. Um and then we had utilities. It was just those June, May um utilities that come in in that July. And then we had one that was just invoiced later on.
Okay.
Okay. I I would just say, so since uh you know, Mr. Crowdis is leaving us and this and we have new leadership coming in, uh is the auditing service that we're talking about establishing some of those policies and procedures uh as we have new leadership come on board, is that something that the firm is able to assist us with?
Yes, and we've already talked with Taylor um a little bit and she's gonna actually, we're gonna have her send in the financials this gym. And we're gonna do our review and quick before um Danielle does a quick review of each of the funds and financial statements. So hopefully we can catch some of those changes before we get to the audit process. And Taylor's kind of already reached out to us to, especially with changeover superintendents and stuff, to kind of have that help um and have that extra set of eyes looking at um to try to help catch those before we get to the audit process. So she's already had talked to us about.
So I would commend Taylor and commend you all for, thank you for helping us take a proactive approach on that.
And these ladies are excellent to work with. I mean, they really are. So other than our long email chains.
Okay, any other questions you guys have for us? I know we give you a lot of information in a small period of time. Um so like I said, questions come up, you can always send them on Patrick, Taylor, and they they can just order them on to us and we can help us. Stuff comes up. Yep. And then Patrick, did you have that signed press letter? I'd say I have a copy if you don't have it.
Yes, please. Sorry.
Pull it out maybe. She and then a board member.
Okay.
Not while you can get that all spitted.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all the information and the assistance.
So if you want to just approve that.
We might meant to approve the, I guess, fiscal year twenty twenty four audit report as presented. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
That's a six zero. Okay, item B, cardiac emergency response plan, first read.
Okay, so this is a wonderful piece of legislation that was put into place um by people that really have no idea what they're talking about. Sorry, maybe that's, shouldn't say that out loud. Um but they um, I mean, we have A E Ds in multiple locations on all, in all of our buildings. We also have A E Ds that are available for our uh offsite locations for activities. Um we also have an agreement within the league that, you know, there should be A E Ds available at all times as well. We also provide training uh every year, uh whether it be through our C P R or first aid training uh for A E Ds and and how to use those in an appropriate way. Uh we we now are required to have a cardiac emergency response plan protocol. Uh this is a first read. Um I will be a hundred percent honest with you. Uh this is, this is very similar to uh templates that are floating around, but um Mrs. Dolacek actually took this and 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 adapted it for our individual schools uh and district. Um uh you will then see this again next month for uh final approval at the July board meeting. And then Mr. Horn will be required to submit this to K D H E. So submitting it to uh an additional uh entity always provides a little bit of angst on my part. Um but I I believe, you know, with maybe minor adjustments or or maybe grammatical things that might be in here, this should be ready for final approval in July. Um so if you do see anything, please please feel free to reach out to myself, um Mrs. Dolacek or or Mr. Horn. And uh just take some time to review that. Um you know, if K D H E wants a little more detail, um you know, maps and and some different things like that, that shouldn't be hard to to do as well. So um again, just a first read, uh getting you guys involved with that um to have you look at that and then it'll be submitted to K D H E by by July thirty first.
Okay, we'll move on to item C, the additional football coach.
So it was brought to our attention last month, um just the request um for an additional football coach. Um you know, through some other conversations, uh it was, it was felt that it needed to be brought to the board for a uh discussion and vote um to decide if the board wanted to move forward with an additional football coach at this time. And um so turning it over to you all for discussion in that.
I know we were given this handout at our last meeting or special meeting.
Yes.
So everybody's had a chance, hopefully, to look at it. Any comments?
I would just like to say in general, um I would like to commend the coaching staff on being very thoughtful and approaching and not just making a request, but being responsive to questions, providing additional data, providing additional background material. And uh I I just want to commend them for for having a very thoughtful request in in answering all of the questions that we had, providing comparisons, providing kind of breakdowns on on our spend. And um I hope that any coach event or any leader of any program coming to you um that has taken that level of thoughtfulness would be worth our consideration, especially um especially as this proposal for at least this first year could be budget neutral. Um maybe where I would start would be because we do have some options for this to be budget neutral for the first year. And considering we have a new uh athletics director coming in and a new superintendent director or a new superintendent that maybe if uh the vote would go in favor of having an assistive football coach to have that be probationary uh based on a year, um considering it would be budget neutral and then reconsider it next year as well with the additional perspective of new leadership that we have coming into place.
I would, I appreciate that, Julie. I mean, you've mentioned a lot of things that kind of went through my mind as well. Um having a thoughtful approach to it, being able to actually bring um data and information around it rather than just coming forward and saying, you know, this is what we would like to do. It's kind of the end of the story. Um so I definitely appreciate that. And you know, it it also, I think, kind of brought to light as well, um you were talking about football as a program and some of the the aspects of it, rather than we're just coaching football. But how this could be used, there's actually a plan um of how that could work, if that is the direction I would go. Talking about position groups, those types of things and, you know, being able to drill down into those aspects of the football program rather than just, you know, a blanket, we have a a team of players type of thing. Um so definitely appreciate that. Um I also had the same thought that when it comes to the um the budget aspect, when it comes to what, you know, um Coach Barrett had come forward, talking about the funds available, those types of things. They have that access to that, to that money and it's really on, for us, it's giving the okay because they have the dollars. It's not on us, like you said, being a a budget neutral um aspect and having that consideration. Um also, um I, you know, was thinking about this from a program standpoint. Um we look at having additional eyes on on athletes, especially high contact sport and football. There's some safety things that could work as well, being, having another set of eyes on field as well as those position groups during practices, those types of things. When when our J V team goes elsewhere, having those those coaches there, um whether that's at the J V game or the barstik that still practices when the J V goes elsewhere, those types of things. There's a lot of different aspects to this and things to to consider that runs a lot deeper than just um we're throwing another coach at a program. So I had those considerations, thought about those things. Um obviously, yeah, you mentioned there was, there was a handout provided, some comparisons. A lot of times I don't think of these as apples to apples comparisons though. Um there's just so many different variables um and different things, different programs, different situations. Um with that said, I did do some additional research and I looked at some other schools too and even looking at successful ones because that's something you also want to look at. And I know that I looked at some eastern schools as well, had high success rates and um facilitating uh six coaches for them. But again, nothing is equal. You can, you can look at this in a lot of different ways. Um personally, from looking at the kids, the program, no cost to us at the district, the information being provided, being able to think about it and having the time to do so, not being rushed into this. We've, we've had some of that opportunity to think through that. Um so I appreciate the opportunity to do that um and think through those things. So um that's kind of where I've been mulling things over and looking at this. And then the the last thing I did want to mention is um with the effort that they've put in, showing that support as well, um definitely been a successful program and not just within football realm. And we we want the same for, I think, all of our programs, right? I mean, that's, that's what we're looking at. And if, you know, Coach Barrett and his staff, being able to talk to them and see how they would utilize that to to take this hopefully to another level as well. Um I agree with what you're saying, you know, we can look at this from a year. We do have some turnover coming up at our administrative levels um and evaluate that as well, being able to continue that conversation and see how it's going. This isn't just a flip the switch and that's the way we run with it. Um being able to have that, I think, is maybe a valuable aspect as well. Um so I know I've been, been talking a lot, but those were some of the things that I had thought through in preparation for the meeting.
Yeah, um in addition to your thoughts and comments, um honestly, at the beginning of this, I was like, no, you know, they don't need a coach, an additional coach. Um we're good with the numbers that we have. But then the information that they did provide to us, my ignorance with football, you know, they were able to explain why they needed an additional coach, not just looking at numbers. Um I appreciated that and, you know, just what they presented, it makes sense, honestly, so.
I think you guys have covered it.
I think I'm gonna play like kind of the double advocate just a little bit on this because I feel like, yes, football has the funding to pay for that. But why do they have so much more money in their account to be able to, you know, say, we'll pay for this coach when we have other programs that struggle and need those extra coaches as well, who couldn't come forward and say, we'll pay for it out of our account? They get the jump on the fundraising before anybody else does. Um I can tell you just with experience, if we give the sixth coach, it's gonna be very hard to take it away. So in a year or two, the numbers drop down to thirty, we're gonna have six coaches. It's just kind of been a pattern. And so I do have some concerns as far as that goes. Um I do appreciate the coaches and what they've done. They did do a very good job presenting. Um but if we're talking about positions, then, you know, you've got track. They could potentially need ten coaches for every position that they coach. So I just worry that we would be opening ourselves up in the future um and causing, you know, detriment to some of the other programs. So that's my thought on it.
This is just a word of caution. I'm I'm not trying to sway anybody in in one way or the other. I I do want to caution you on the the idea of um allowing a specific sport to be able to dictate to you the number of coaches that you have because they have money. Um and and that, I mean, because then what happens when the next program says, well, we have money in our account, we we need another coach too. So i- if you were to approve this in a in a trial basis of 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 whatever that would look like, and I think the motion should be pretty specific in that um you should also probably um commit to that as a district to pay for that additional coach. Because you then, I mean, if you don't, you then open up a Pandora's box that basically anybody that comes in and says, well, I have money in the account, I need an additional coach. And you then abdicate your responsibility as the board to make um personnel decisions um to whatever program comes in and says, well, we have the money to do that. Does that, does that make sense? So I just would caution you in terms of looking at it in terms of, well, it doesn't really cost us any money. I mean, it's, I mean, we sp- we spend more on helmets every year than 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 this additional assistant coach would would cost us. We we actually spend more on reconditioning our helmets than what this coach would cost. So um you know, we 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 put a lot of pride in the safety equipment that we that we purchase and maintain for the program. You know, and not to, not to diminish what a coach makes because they do, they do put in a tremendous amount of time. I've been there, done that. But um, you know, that would be a commitment, I would would believe, by the district. Not necessarily putting that commitment on the program.
Hey, Mr. Crowdis.
Yes.
Our attorney al- also cautioned us from the T, are the supporting, be able to pay that out of their funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was actually K S B and our local attorney cautioned us on that.
The one thing I would add on on other programs um that I would hope uh would be part of our process is is as the board has been discussing, coming up kind of a list of, a list of wish lists kind of things. But that would include, you know, not just building maintenance and facilities, additional personnel positions related to academics, academic programs, and I think athletics would be another bucket. Um so I hope that we as a board, as we embark on that process, kind of look at all of those different buckets um so that our our coaches and leaders of other programs that have requests, whether they be equipment, whether they be personnel, whether they be facilities, would have the opportunity to put input in there uh and also put forward the, some some proposals or things to to put on the docket for the board to consider as well. I think that would be great to embark on that exercise and then we would kind of have that. Whereas this one was one specific program coming to us with a specific request. And, you know, I think I look at it as the the whole package put together. That's why I kind of said maybe, I know it's hard to dial it back, but having a review process after a year, all of that, that good. I just, it, any program that came to us would want to have that voice and that input into, hey, this is what I like. This is, this is, if we could do this to advance our program if there was additional funding available or hey, the next step, next thing that we need to replace is this. Or having that kind of as our, as we embark on that process of collecting that information.
Any other comments?
Would, um I can remember from Dawn, if they, if football was to fund this um out of their own funds, is there anything like in writing or that we have, I don't want to say control, but we have input or control over who they hire, I guess?
Um I mean, I mean, all re- all recommendations are brought to the board. So I mean, that would be, you ultimately have the vote to say yes or no that that person is hired.
Okay.
If, I mean, if you, if you said, yes, we would approve tonight for a one-year um trial basis to have a sixth, you know, football coach, that approval for that person would would ult- ultimately come to the board for for final approval for that individual.
So Becky.
Yes.
I just have another question. So I'm just kind of listening, do we need to have two separate votes? One for if we are going to approve a sixth coach, and then another vote to whether they're, we're going to allow them to pay out of their expenses?
That probably would be wise unless, unless you combine that all in one. But having two would give the opportunity for, you know, the separation of tho- of those. So, yeah, I think, I think it would be wise to say, you know, to have a motion as to whether or not, you know, there is a, an additional coach, and then the second motion would be that football would be allowed to pay for that or whether or not it would come out of district funds. And then, I mean, we can do clarification as the motion is, is created as well.
Well, if we're separating that out, if that is in best interest, I would go ahead and I will take the, the opportunity to move for the allowance of boys in high school football to have an additional assistant coach to the program.
Okay, and is that
Probationary?
Just a, just a, just a blanket, or are we looking at a probationary as was discussed?
I say as probationary for one year as, as discussed.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to allow for an additional coach for football on a probationary year period? All in favor?
No.
All, all opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Four to.
Passes four to. Okay, how about a motion for funds?
I'll take the, the second motion, and I would say I would move to allow these appropriate entity of the account. I'm, I'm not sure what the appropriate fund name is. For the, for the full team. I don't know what their team fund is called.
For the, for the salary.
Yeah, I would say for, for a, a one-time or a one-year funding of the position, subject to review, following the conclusion of the upcoming football season.
From the activity account.
From the football activity account.
For one year, subject to review for the following fiscal year.
I would second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
No.
Okay, passes four to.
Okay.
All right, thank you, good discussion.
Yeah, good discussion.
Okay, we'll go to item D, property and casualty insurance.
All right, so a week ago Wednesday, I went down to Wichita for our annual property and casualty meeting. They kept saying that it was gonna be a good meeting, and if you've read the notes already and done some comparison, we are at about a $12,000 decrease in our property and casualty insurance. The, this is kind of unheard of. I mean, Neil works in the insurance industry, but I would, a lot of times I question myself in terms of being in a pool, and we, we do things with KSB, we do things with KBS, we, we contract with our gas service, we contract with our property and casualty insurance. The, these people work diligently to help the districts that are a part of this pool. And I know I say that, sound like an advertisement. It's really easy to say that whenever you have a $12,000 decrease in premiums over the year. But I honestly believe that wholeheartedly, and it's, it's, it's proved to be very beneficial for our, for our district. So just
And the coverages are adequate, I mean, they're
Our, our coverages are more than what we were being covered when we were with the MC. So across the board, whether it is property, casualty, our vehicles, our cybersecurity, all of that is above and beyond where we were before. The other piece of it is, oh, shoot, I was just gonna
Sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay, but I just, you know, I, I mean, it's, oh, the other piece of it, too, is the pool as a whole has agreed that the pool will never go to a percentage deductible for, for roofs. That is the industry standard at this point in time. You know, in the, in the, the information that I provided for you, those, those are flat fees. Our property and our deductibles for wind and hail is $25,000. You know, tho- those are flat fees, they're, those are not a percentage, which is causing some districts to basically stockpile money and be unable to cover any of the wind and hail deductibles that they have, because they are a one or a two percent deductible as opposed to just a flat fee. And so that is, that has been an agreement within the pool, the, the KICS pool, you know, for, for quite some time, and, and will continue on. So in terms of coverage, yes, you, we're, we're sustainably, you know, covered, and it won't break our bank if we did have a claim. So. So I would just request a, a motion to approve the continuation of the property and casualty insurance with KICS for the 25-26 school year for $182,835.17.
I move to approve the continuation of property and casualty insurance with KICS for the 25-26 school year for $182,835.17, as presented.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six to. Okay, item E, student insurance.
So I did, you know, we provide the student insurance for, you know, for accidents and different things that happen at school, as well as an additional coverage to, you know, fill that gap between an individual's insurance and, and the catastrophic insurance that KIC provides. I did go ahead and put that out to quote. I contacted three different companies, two, two went ahead and responded. I just wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence with that. You know, obviously, the, the, the student assurance is a, is a company that we went to when I first got here. We've since moved away from them due, due to the cost and the, and the usage of this. The KICS, again, like I said, you know, putting all of our eggs in one basket, but the KICS quote is half the cost as the student assurance quote. So we, we typically run about five claims a year, maybe a little bit more, depending on some, some injuries that might take place in, in different athletics. And so my recommendation is to continue with our KICS. Student and athletic insurance for a cost of $6,734.60.
I move to continue student and athletic insurance with KICS for the 2025-26 school year in the amount of $6,734.60, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six. Okay, item F, health insurance.
So just information for you all here. The information provided shows the, the vote that took place. We, we did put this to a vote of our insured employees for health insurance. The premiums, when we were looking at apples-to-apples comparison, went up 3.9%. That, again, back to being part of a pool. You know, some of the brokers that came in and, and presented to us were, were presenting 50, 40, and 20% increases. You know, ESDAK is very healthy, and we're able to buy down that from about a 7.8% increase, which is what we've been over the last couple of years, to a 3.9% increase. And then we put it to a vote as to whether or not we wanted to stay with the two-tiered plan, which is very similar to the plan we've been on, or move over to a four-tiered plan, which is a little bit different structure, has a couple more options. And overwhelmingly, 80% to 20%, the, the employees decided to stay with the two-tiered plan, and that's with 60 responses out of about 82 that currently take our insurance. So just information for you all to see what we're moving in, in that direction.
Item G, approval of middle school, high school math curriculum.
And the quote that you have in front of you is the high school. The middle school curriculum is staying the same. There's no change there. We, we purchased an additional year with that one, but there's, there's no change to the curriculum. So the, the quote that you have in front of you is the new high school curriculum. We did a review process, you guys visited Larned.
Yeah.
So anything else, Mr. Mason?
Both math teachers, I know we're losing James, but we're dead set on the book series that we went with. It will go down to the middle school level with algebra one, so it matches our algebra curriculum at the high school. But we decided to go back to traditional textbooks. They have plenty of practice problems. So kind of go back to the meat and potatoes of math as opposed to what we were finding. You know, the kids are really good with curriculum, or with that technology. They figure out they go into that technology, they'll get the curriculum online and just put in the right numbers till they get it right and then move on. So they're just concerned about getting the right answer and grade as opposed to how to get to it. So we found out that was a problem. So we're still gonna use the Math IXL, which is a free service from the state to do some online supplemental curriculum, but we felt like this is the best for us.
Middle school math teachers okay with that, too, the one that will be teaching algebra?
Yes, yes, yes. And had this curriculum gone down to this sixth, seventh, fifth grade level, they would've gone with that saying that it did not.
Okay.
So that's why they chose to go one, one more year to look at more curriculum at the middle school level. Same as elementary.
Okay, I was just gonna say, that would be great if middle school could use the same type of curriculum. Because I, I agree with you with the textbooks and then those programs. I mean, that's what they do, they spend their time running my kids, do they? Trying and trying to get the right answer, that's not teaching anything.
Twice I got with my, my own kids, trying to help them learn in school when I was a math teacher, it was just frustrating, because, you know, you click back to go to an example, and if it bothers for 10 seconds, you're already a little bit upset because you don't know how to do the problem. It was a disaster. I told myself I would never go back to 1% online curriculum for math especially.
Thank you.
And I don't know why these curriculums, they, these vendors, they specialize in certain grados. You know, why just high school, why not go down to the middle school level as well? So it's almost impossible to find a curriculum pre-K through 12 that we all like. So this is by far the best that we came up with.
Yep, yeah, I commend Mr. Mason and, and the math teachers for taking the time to, to, I mean, this has been a, a year-long process, so they've done a great job.
And the good thing is, too, since there's no technology tied to it, we not, don't necessarily have to adopt again in five or six years, we don't have a license. So if those are future and we're liking it, we can continue, continue using it.
I move to approve the purchase of the Pearson Math Curriculum in the amount of $31,005.18 from the textbooks fund as presented.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six to. Item H, Cook Center for Human Connection.
Well, I'm bringing this to you just simply because, I mean, if it's something that we're gonna put on our website, I definitely want you to be aware of it. The Cook Center for Human Connection is a, it's a national organization that, that's taking hold and, and is basically ran by the Cook Foundation. But there, and, and it says launch point, it should be a launch point. So it's a, it's a launch point that'll be on our website that takes, you know, basically anyone that, that would like to access, you know, free materials to help teachers, administrators, students, and parents navigate digital and mental aspects of the world. So there's, there's, there's resources for parents in terms of difficult situations. There's resources for people that are struggling with mental health issues. And it's all free, and it's just a matter of us putting it out on the, on the website. This is, you know, they're, they're primarily in the Colorado, Utah, Nevada area. And, and I got associated with them, you know, through that organization that I went to the Leadership Institute with. But, you know, Kansas, there's, there's two or three districts, including Goddard as one of the districts in the state that's using, you know, the Cook Center medallion on their website. Questions?
Have our school counselors all reviewed this and
They have not. I've sent, I've sent the resources to them, but they've not all reviewed it.
And this is something, it's just the link that'll be on our website that'll go to that, so we wouldn't have to keep anything updated.
Nope, it'll just be a link that'll go out to their website. And if you want, wanna table it, and I'll send the resources, and then it can be brought up again next year. I would be more than happy to do that. I don't want anybody to feel rushed on this situation either.
Could we just table it for a month and have the counselors review it before next month?
I don't know that I'll have that by then, just simply because, you know, it is summertime.
But this is something that, because it's a free course, it could be done at any time.
Could be done at any time.
Yeah, I just want someone to check out, someone with mental health expertise to just do a quick review and make sure
Yep.
the resources align.
I'll, I'll resend it out to the, to the counselors and then
Table it till August or September.
Yeah, make a note for, for, for later, so.
Item I, staff handbooks, first read.
So I just want to get everybody acquainted with some of the changes with the staff handbooks. Not, no major changes, obviously, some, some names. Some of those are associated with contact information. Couple of things that we have talked about internally is any manual adjustment to an employee's clocking in or clocking out must also be accompanied by a comment giving some explanation as to what that happened. I mean, we, we have issues all the time where, oh, you know, it, we thought we got clocked out, but got home and realized that it didn't clock us out. So just some explanation as to what's going on with those manual, with those manual adjustments. Also, some of the items that are being discussed within negotiations. Any leave that is scheduled prior or after a scheduled break needs to have administrative approval. I believe that's a good practice. It, it gives the administrators, and we've talked about that, the option to, the option to say, hey, I, I can't find a substitute, or I'm gonna have to be the one and I'm not available. So, you know, having prior approval, so it's not the day of. I gotta, I got a dentist appointment. Well, we all know that dentist appointments take, you know, a year to get anyway. But any of those types of things prior to or right after a scheduled break. The, a couple of other things that go along with some of The couple other things that go along with some of the discussions in executive session is adding that the district will contribute ninety-five percent of the monthly single premium of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-four hundred dollar deductible plan. Making things a lot more specific. This equates to seven hundred and seventy-one dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So those would be adjustable per negotiations, and we've talked about that a little bit. So then, a lot of the other things then carry over into the certified handbook, staff absences in there, as well as bus driver handbook in, in those areas. So some repeat repetition, but addressing those in separate, different handbooks that we have available. I'll discuss all of these with Mr. Horn. Then this will be on the agenda for the July Board meeting, for your final approval for those handbooks.
My only thing would be adding maybe a sentence, the staff absence forms for administrative leeway. So somebody has to have an emergency root canal, somebody has bereavement leave that happens to fall on a date that's directly before or after a break. I'd hate to see like somebody be put in a bind because they didn't get three weeks' approval to have an emergency procedure or something like that, just to have a clause for, unless, you know, some sort of administrative leeway, unless there's administrative approval, emergency situation, something like that.
I mean, could maybe just say exceptions.
Yeah.
Administrative exceptions.
Yeah, administrative, yeah, with, just something to cover so we don't feel like somebody gets stuck.
Yep, no, that's understandable.
I don't feel like a personal basis in this.
It's not, it's not necessarily in your building, so it is happening, so.
Did you say on there too, like, I know you said that with the time clock adjustments, but did you say with the absences, they have to put reasons for absence as well? That's a comment.
Oh, that did not, that will end up in negotiated agreement.
But it needs to be in the classified.
And also needs to be in the classified as well. Yeah, I will, I will make that adjustment, get that to Mr. Horn.
Move on to item J, Baseball Softball Cooperative Agreement.
So primarily, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Primarily discussion, I mean, if, if you want to move forward with approval or not, you know, that, that's up to you. Couple pieces of information I received from both KESHA and KSB. Baseball and softball are actually two separate agreements. Those are not one agreement that you have to pass baseball, and then you have to pass baseball, or excuse me, softball. That, that does not fall under any of that type of, you have to do both of them type of situation. As well as the deadline for spring cooperative agreement is January one. You know, we, we've always typically, since I've been here, want to get that approved sooner than later. You know, I would not want to, you know, wait until, until the December Board meeting to approve that. But those are pieces of information that I, I wanted to clarify with everyone and make sure everybody was on the same page in terms of those.
Do we have estimated numbers from Central Plains for next year?
From Central Plains, we do not.
Do we also softball is minimal. I don't know about baseball, but softball is, I mean.
Do you know how many players we have from Central Plains come over to play softball or baseball?
Gosh, I have baseball, it's probably five or six, and from a number standpoint, it's needed in baseball.
Okay.
Softball, what, three, four, or five maybe?
Yeah, I mean, we've lost, they're graduating two. Yeah, they graduated two. One's actually coming over here next year to go to school. So maybe, yeah, handful, I don't know. But, you know, everybody knows how I've always voted.
Our members are good in softball, right?
They always have.
They're always strong.
I think it's, I haven't actually ever seen the cooperative agreement, so before I vote on it, I'd actually delay. I mean, just to say like there's
Oh, no, that's fine. Okay, so.
Yeah, I was like, I was like.
No, that's fine. So the co-op, you know, is just for us to have a co-op with Central Plains for them to bring over, you know, baseball and softball players to play for Hoyzington. Originally, way back when, it started with baseball because we needed numbers. Well, then, at one point, it came up that if baseball is being offered to Cloughland Central Plains, that softball has to as well, to make it equal. And so, I mean, I've always been against it just because softball has never needed numbers. Baseball has, but we always had to go with both or none. Now, Patrick had found out that they are two separate agreements, and we don't have to go with both or, or none, so. But that's, that's been my biggest thing. It's just, you know, you go to school in Hoyzington, we have the numbers for softball. How, why are these students going to be taking positions of those Hoyzington students? It's always been.
And this year, we had a change in classification for softball. Was softball and baseball or just for softball?
And I thought we wouldn't have gone up to four A, would we?
Yeah, you have to combine the two schools enrollment, so we can co-op then.
Yeah. So we would've stayed three A if we hadn't.
Have we not had it yet?
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing breakdowns in our pipeline numbers as well as intended students from Central Plains.
Yeah, I don't know that I would entertain a motion tonight anyway because typically, we've always had the coaches come in and give us their stance on it as well. And I would hate not hear what they have to say as well.
But, and, you know, what Patrick was saying too, for some reason, you know, they've always wanted to rush it even though the deadline for the agreement isn't until, you know, January first. But like you said, we don't want to wait that long, but at least the longer, longer we wait, we would have better numbers.
Or if that's something that they could survey at enrollment, or
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Like, yeah, I'd be interested.
There would be a chance, if, if that's the issue, go that Central Plains could get restless and go co-op with someone else. That's just a possibility.
And they, they have explored options. So they've already done that.
Have they expressed interest in preferring one of those other options versus staying with Hoyzington? Or where, like, have they come to us asking?
I can't speak for them. I mean, I, I think, I mean, I think they would prefer to just keep it the way it is and do, and do both and, and just continue on. But I mean, there, there is an interest as a district to, to continue the co-op, so.
And at one point, wasn't Otis interested in coming over here, but I can't remember.
They reached out before.
Okay.
Yeah, I think two, I think two years ago they reached out.
Can't agree with the thirds with the third school.
Okay, okay.
And I don't think they had very good numbers either, did they?
No.
Yeah, and Julie, the agreement continues.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
High, high school programs are two years, middle school programs are, are a single year agreement if you do, if you do those.
Yeah, I'd also be interested in perspective from coaches and.
And that's what we've typically done in the past, is given them their chance too.
And do you want those in July?
No, I'm thinking maybe August, September.
Like after?
Yeah, if they could, if they could provide us some data as to help, so we would know if we were at that classification, if that would bump us up again. I guess that's enrolled, based on enrollment, not on.
And with, with their numbers and our numbers, I mean, it's almost guaranteed will be four A again.
Be four A again?
Yeah.
Yeah, it also comes up, I guess, the other forty-three, forty schools that are on that public, what their enrollment does, this is hard to predict.
So does the classification change every year, or is it so like? We went up, it is every year.
When is that, when is that classification set for baseball, softball, do you know?
Count eight.
After the count eight. Okay, so if we heard in August, even if we voted in early September, it would be before count eight, okay?
Nick, do we know if, how many incoming freshmen are entrusted in softball?
I could tell you.
Okay.
That'd be pretty good data for.
From like, from summer ball experience, not very many. That, that eighth grade class is not heavy on softball. That would be incoming freshmen. You have some in middle school coming up that are gonna be a lot heavier, but I don't know. But that's, that's who play like summer ball, like that's not counting, like, so, I mean, you could have higher numbers.
Right.
There's, I mean, there, there could be, there could be some.
All right, we'll move on to item eight, Superintendent Report.
Well, first off, thank, thank you for allowing me to serve as superintendent. This is my last, not a meeting, but it's my last, you know, so I appreciate the support that I've received from the community as a whole and, and just appreciate everything that has, has been accomplished over the last five years. So you're an excellent board and, and I, I continue to tell people hands down, you know, I, I believe that our administrative staff is as good as anybody out there. Those are the people I work with directly and, and we have an excellent teaching staff. So, so it's a great community and, and I do appreciate the support that I was given, so thank you very much. You know, I did put in the weekly update a couple of weeks ago, last time I, I sent that out to you, that we are going to republish. I was contacted by K, KSVE because of the audited numbers and increased. Did we forget something?
No.
Okay. The audited numbers did increase, and so we, we are being given another fifty-seven thousand six hundred and seven dollars. So that was a significant enough amount to go ahead and republish our general fund, which will directly impact our at-risk funding as well. So on the morning of June ninth at seven PM, uh, seven AM, there will be a special meeting for republishing of the budget. There will be two funds that will be on that, and it was published in the newspaper last Thursday. So it will be ten days after that for you to go ahead and have that meeting. Everything will be set and ready for you to approve that. Just recently, any questions about republication? Some people see it as a negative. Obviously, if we get more money, that's kind of a positive. I anticipated having five less kids and we ended up having like five more kids. So that's always a good problem to have, so. It's all in your perspective and every superintendent has a, an opinion on that. Just recently, we were contacted, you know, by KSVE. We were contacted by Special Ed Co-op, we were contacted by KDHE that in the years, physical year sixteen through physical years twenty-one, there was some mistakes made in terms of Medicaid. And whether you realize it or not, we do receive Medicaid funding for different services that are provided to our special education students. And sometime in physical year nineteen, we were actually given four thousand twenty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents more than we were supposed to have been given. So as, because we fall under the fifty thousand dollar mark, they will just subtract that from our final state aid in, in the end of June. So we're gonna get an additional fifty-seven thousand, but they're gonna hold back four thousand. And this is a mistake that was made in part by KDHE. Again, going back to my previous comment about sometimes getting anxious about the different organizations that we have to intertwine with. Budget workshop is coming up on June seventeenth. Taylor and I will be traveling out to Southwest Plains Regional Service Center at Sablet. She will actually meet up with Mr. Horn while we're out there, and then I'll meet up with the Dodge City people and, and we'll have an opportunity to be with our appropriate people. Mr. Horn will be here tomorrow. He and I are, are gonna be heading around to the district buildings and, and starting to take a look at some of that. A little bit different perspective, he won't be on an interview this time around. So we'll probably start at the activity center because it is such a massive building overall. Close out the financial books. I would suggest that we do a, a special board meeting June twenty-seventh at seven AM to close those financial books out. I don't know that we'll have the final findings from the auditor, but we'll have a pretty good idea of where we're at in terms of closing out the general fund and getting that zeroed out for that as well. And then, like, like the auditor said, we will be working with them to close the books out on a final basis as well. And then that, the audit for the twenty-five school year will actually start in August. We move that up significantly.
Say the twenty-fifth, not the twenty-seventh, right? It's that Wednesday morning.
Let's do the Wednesday morning, twenty-seventh, I'm sorry.
That's the twenty-fifth.
Sorry. Which one's what?
The twenty-fifth is Wednesday.
Twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Did I say the twenty-seventh? Sorry. Okay, twenty-fifth at seven AM. You gotta open my mouth.
I will not be able to be in attendance that meeting.
Okay.
That's the first day of the fair.
Oh, come on.
I've got too many animals to get.
I was gonna say, wrangle all your animals out there.
Oh, too many.
So, and that, and, and again, that'll, that'll basically be a, a short, short meeting to review kind of the estimates of where we think we're gonna be in terms of closing out the books and, and transfers. And then just a, just a brief approval of, you know, giving basically Taylor and Mr. Horn the, the, and myself, you know, the, the approval to, to close those books out, so brief meeting. And then today, the June, uh, board policy updates were released by KSV. Yeah, I guess today is Monday. So I'll, I'll go ahead and send you those on, on probably tomorrow in a weekly update. And then those will be on for first reading for, I would suggest, the July Board meeting, just so we can continue to roll those. And obviously, with Mr. Horn coming in with, with experience, we won't get into that situation where, when I came in as a newbie, forgot about those and was like, shoot, and so we had to make up a couple of years' worth of those. But those updates came out. There don't seem to be very many, but, but it's always good to keep up on all of that. Any questions on anything? I kind of hit those real quick and went on, so. Any questions, concerns?
Nope.
Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Legislative Report.
We survived the legislative session. I, I would encourage you to continue to communicate. I, I've recently seen more legislative coffees. Sherry Brantley has been good about posting those. I would encourage her to post those sooner because, you know, there's a few of them that you see the day of and, and you missed it. Continue to reach out to them, continue to, you know, request, you know, fully funding of special education. The, uh, there is a, there is a Educational Funding Task Force that is currently underway that, uh, there's a, there's a very good possibility that there could be a significant impact to schools our size. We're right in that median area in terms of population. And so, you know, reaching out to, to, to Dr. Brantley as well as, you know, Senator Blue to just say, here's, here's how this affects us. And, and, you know, public education is a center point within our community of, of, of the community and, and just a community piece. And so just express to them, you, you as board members are also, you know, community members and parents and, and constituents of those people that, that they should be voted on. And, and so just, I would encourage you to continue to reach out to them. Even if they don't respond, keep reaching out, because at least they hear that you're saying something.
Thank you. All right, board member reports. No, nothing.
Okay, um, I will tell you as of today, which the deadline, I believe, was today. Um, uh, Neil Oaks, Tracy Snyder, Derek David, and Sarah Tarleton are, have filed for uh the board elections that will be coming up, so. Uh, Derek David.
I'm just gonna three positions, correct?
Yes, so there's three open positions.
All right.
So.
Okay, move on to item nine, consideration of district personnel. Um, I move we go into executive session for ten minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under the K O M A. Exception for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations with Mr. Crowdis present. The open meeting will resume at eight forty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Jess, are you still with us?
Yes, sorry, I was on mute, yelling on the phone.
All righty. All right.
So these motions count as well. Go work on my head.
Okay, coming out, uh, cause I could have sessioned up the following motions. I move to accept the resignation of Presley Smith, high school girls assistant.
Basketball?
Basketball and, and suffrage, high school, zero reasons why.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Jess, are you still with us?
Yes.
Okay. Passes six, zero.
I keep forgetting I'm on mute.
I move to accept the resignation of Cindy Wilborn from her teaching position at the middle school.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six, zero. Okay, I move to accept the nomination of coaches and sponsors for the supplemental positions as presented. Zero reasons why, Hope Randolph, boys' basketball assistant coach, high school, correct?
Yep.
Mason Hackston, boys' assistant wrestling, high school, Chris Holindi. And girls' assistant wrestling, high school, Brett Roberts. Uh, prom head sponsor, Carla Reisner, and prom assistant, Drew Reisner, and Clayton Sargent.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six, zero. All right, I pulled them all, didn't I?
Yep.
Okay. I move we go into executive session for, you said thirty minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty minutes pursuant to discuss the exception for employer employee negotiations under K O M A. To discuss negotiations training and negotiations letter information with Mr. Crowdis. The open meeting will resume in the boardroom at nine twenty?
I guess.
Oh. We'll get it.
I was just gonna ask, is there a volleyball?
I forgot to put it on here, but I put it on there, so we'll get it after executive session.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. Yeah, I just thought that was.
Okay, that's why I was second.
Sarah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes six, zero.
What?
All right.
Are you coming up with the motion?
Just moving middle school assistants. Cause I missed some.
What are it? What are my, what are my motion? I, I can't, can I put it back up at the top?
Yeah, she could put that with the rest of them, couldn't she?
Yes.
Okay, and we're not doing anything with the.
Nope, we don't have to do anything.
So like, I just can put it here, Patrick, after this?
After the other personnel, yeah.
Yeah, just add it there. Okay, coming out of executive session with the following motion, I move to approve Mara Fletchall for middle school assistant volleyball. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six, zero. And that is it, I move to adjourn.
Second.
We're seconded.
Third, fourth.
Okay, we're done, then move to adjourn, all in favor?
Yes.
Six, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Send pictures.
Will do.
Okay, bye.